I call to order this work session meeting of the San Marcos City Council. Today is Tuesday, April 1st, the time is 3:00 P.M. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll?
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Sol Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Uh, here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez. We have a quorum present.
Okay, first is citizen comment. City Council, we'll hear citizens comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. There is a sign up process. You may speak once during the citizen comment time period. It may not yield time to others. You'll have three minutes when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen. And we will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner. We have a speaker, Mr. Billy Ray Callahan, will be addressing us this afternoon. If you will come forward, yes, sir. If you'll come forward, adjust the microphone as you need. State your name and your three minutes will begin then.
Hello, council members. At my last meeting, I requested that you assemble the following people. Number one, Mr. and Mrs. David Zing, property owner. Number two, Chase Dames of Design Originals. Joanne Parsons, President of the Calaboose. Ben Stallone, Vice President of the Calaboose. Number five, Diane Insley, Director of the San Marcos Library. And number six, Alex Dan guard, Chief Building Office, I mean Officer of the City of San Marcos. And also John Marks. And there are two other names that I would like to add to this list. Ben Patterson, he's my neighbor and also myself. And the reason why this personnel must be assembled is because I need all parties to show up at the same time so that I can put a a end to this dilemma. So this, since this is my first time at a city, a citizen comment period as a workshop, I'm going to be a bit in the dark. But I need all these parties to be assembled at a workshop meeting. So each one can have a say as to why this is very important to me as well as them. Thank you.
That concludes the citizen comment portion of our program. And we are now to presentation number one. Ms. Trevino.
Receive a stat presentation on the bicycle friendly community designation granted to the City of San Marcos by the League of American Cyclists, including report card recommendations provided by the league and discuss next steps based on recommendations.
Ms. Reyes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Our first presentation this afternoon is in regards to the City of San Marcos being named a bicycle friendly community through the League of American Cyclists. Chief Planner Lauren Canton, Clanton, sorry, will recap the application process. As part of the award, the city received feedback on how to strengthen our bicycle system. We will discuss next steps toward realizing these recommendations. I will now turn it over to Ms. Clanton.
Okay, and hold on, are y'all on Zoom?
I'm not yet.
Okay. All right, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. So as that warm introduction already informed you, my name is Lauren Clanton. I work within the planning department. This picture is from our 2024 Bike Month proclamation. So I am in that picture. I'm on the left, wearing the helmet. But it's in the context of so many other people. This picture just demonstrates how many people are involved in advancing the bike system in San Marcos. And that's going to be a theme throughout this presentation. I would like to start by looking at some of our existing plan documents that provide a mandate to pursue bicycle friendliness in the city. If we take a look at the 2025 strategic plan, goal four is to improve neighborhood and regional connectivity to provide a safe, convenient, and efficient multimodal system for goods, services, and people of all income levels and abilities to move throughout the city. We can also look at our comprehensive plan that was passed last year. These three goals are all interrelated. Goal one seeks a robust and balanced transportation system. Goal two seeks a connected transportation system. And goal three seeks a transportation system that is integrated with other systems such as our economy, transit, and neighborhoods. With these mandates in mind, we pursued renewal of our bicycle friendly communities designation. This designation is offered through the League of American Cyclists and recognizes continued progress in bicycle infrastructure, culture, and policies. The city has some history with the league. So in 2018, we applied for and received a bronze designation. In 2024, we pursued that designation again. We went through the application process and it resulted in renewal of that award in 2024, once again at the bronze level. In four years, we'll be up for renewal again. So in 2028, we'll be pursuing that recognition once again. I also want to acknowledge that bicycle friendly communities exist within a larger ecosystem. According to the League of American Cyclists, the Bicycle Friendly America program encompasses multiple recognitions. It's possible to apply for a bicycle friendly business designation, bicycle friendly university, or bicycle friendly community. You can see that map on the left that shows a ranking of different states. These awards are taken in tandem to produce this ranking. There's also a report card specifically for states. And just to give you a frame of reference, Texas is number 30. An important question to ask here is why this status matters? Well, I went right to the source for that answer. According to the League of American Cyclists, there are six reasons that you would pursue this award. It sets standards, affects decisions, inspires action, guides progress, rewards persistence, and raises expectations. You can also see that other communities in Texas have gotten the same idea. There are 12 existing bicycle friendly communities in Texas. You can see San Marcos singled out in that table. You can also see that of those 12, 11 are bronze. Bronze is pretty much the norm in Texas, so we are in keeping with that trend. This slide serves two purposes. One is just to show the effort that went into the application process. And the other is a thank you to the people within the city who assisted in getting this together. You can see an assortment of all the departments that were involved. So Planning and Development Services sort of unifying the effort. You see we had support from Engineering, Public Works. When we had a mapping question, we went to Geographic Information Systems. You just see a whole array of departments that were involved. I also want to point out that within my department, I felt very supportive. Our Assistant Director, Andrea Villalobos, took this effort very seriously. And I had, I had, I worked in tandem with Abigail Lloyd, our GIS analyst. So that, we just talked about all the effort that happened inside the walls of the city. Now we're going to talk about the effort that happens outside the walls of the city. As part of this application, we reached out to local advocates. That included schools, bike shops, nonprofits. That is how we obtained the picture on the right. Crockett Elementary School hosted a bike bus to school where students biked together and it created this feeling of safety as they took a bike to school. We also circulated a public survey. So this survey was given to us by the League of American Cyclists. The questions were decided by the league. And we made sure that link reached the public. The survey ran from July to October of 2024, and the results informed our final score. So looking at those public survey responses, we received 192 responses. Some things you can pick up from these figures. Typically, when asked about whether they feel safe, whether they are satisfied with the bike system, you see that our respondents typically landed in the middle. The strongest response to is it safe or dangerous to ride a bicycle in your neighborhood? Or does it depend? The strongest answer was it depends. But positively, we saw that we got a clear indication of what would make people feel more safe. That was strongly related to the built environment. So you see some of the changes requested at the bottom. The top four answers were more bike lanes, more bike paths, improve existing bike lanes, for example, make them protected, and then reduce speeds. So here we can see a snapshot of our report card. One thing I'm very grateful for, the league did not just give us the status, they gave us suggestions about how to get better. So here you can see the first page of that report card. I just want to note that we were scored, we were scored against cities of similar size. So we were kind of grouped into a category. Given that our population is about 70,000, we were considered medium. And our score was considered within that category. The category, so within the scoring, there were five different topics touched on. It's the five Es. This is pretty popular in the transportation world. So engineering, education, encouragement, evaluation, planning, and equity. Of those five topics, we got the highest score in engineering, and we saw a little bit of a lower score for equity. This report card was actually six pages long. So some of the pages just list recommendations for things we could be doing better. Gaps in our encouragement, just things that would help us get a little bit closer to silver status. So the first is to revisit the complete streets policy to ensure better tracking and implementation, just to make sure that the selection criteria we've already adopted through the Transportation Master Plan, we're implementing as we install bike facilities. Second is to gather feedback on recently installed bike lanes. I also just want to note that feedback could be verbal. Feedback could be an analysis we do, crash analysis, we could count ridership. So feedback encompasses quite a bit. Work with local employers to develop a commuter incentive program encouraging bicycle trips to work. Establish a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee to collect ongoing citizen input. It's possible to appoint a Safe Routes to School Coordinator. And to engage diverse groups, including students interested in the League Cycling Instructor Certification. So this certification is offered through the League of American Cyclists. And because students are so eager to get involved, that could be, you know, a very simple way of them getting involved. So I also want to take the opportunity just to talk about how we're doing. We're already thinking about 2028, but we're doing some great things now. The City of San Marcos hosted 120 miles and counting of bike facilities. Those range from sharrows to bike lanes, protected lanes, off-street shared use paths and trails. We're also celebrating the launch of our bike share. So that launch occurred last year. I was originally going to say it had grown to 17 e-bikes, but after speaking with our multimodal parking manager, it sounds like it's closer to 27. And you can see this map where all those facilities are put on display, where the public can access that interactive map to see what we have available. We also do a good, solid amount of engagement. So here on the left, you can see just a screenshot of our story map. This is a webpage that is a one-stop shop. It provides links, for example, to that interactive map that was referenced before. Yearly, especially during Bike Month, when we have events that we want to promote, they show up on this bike story map. You can see on the right a picture of one of those events. So Bike Month is coming up in May, and soon we'll have another Bike to Work Day. You can see that it was well attended in 2024. So as we talk about making those changes, as we talk about delivering projects and communicating what we've delivered, I just want to touch once again on all the departments that are involved. So you have Public Works that does striping and signage. You have Engineering and Capital Improvements that lends that long-term perspective through the Transportation Master Plan and the Capital Improvement Program. You have Planning and Development Services. When development comes in, that's an opportunity to add bike lanes, bike parking. So we make sure that those accommodations are reflected as we make those land use decisions. We have Parks and Recreation, which is responsible for the construction and maintenance of trails. And finally, we have GIS that maps those projects planned and completed so that we can keep track of what we plan to do and what we're doing. The reason I point this out, we're moving on to next steps. So my first point here is to work across departments to streamline communication. So our first step was just to make sure all those departments are talking to each other. We had a meeting on March 4th where we all met in the same room, just to get started, talk about the feedback we've gotten and where we can go from here. Another next step is to pursue equity-based conversations. I just want to speak from experience and say that equity score is not where we want to stay. And I've reached out to our Community Engagement and Resource Coordinator to make sure that we begin those conversations. We also have the opportunity to identify low-hanging fruit. Some of the recommendations in the report card are pretty simple, things like having standards for our bike parking. So we're looking into how those can be codified through Development Code Amendments. And then finally, strengthen relationships with community partners. We already have relationships in motion, but it is always good to keep strengthening them, especially as we move toward renewal in four years. Those are, that concludes my presentation and I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. A nice, nice presentation. And it gave us a lot of information and a lot of things that we knew and things that we need to work on. So, Council, are there any questions? Ms. Rodriguez.
So what would the process be, like when we talk about identifying, just because I'm ignorant, what would the process be as far as like the Development Code Amendments? Y'all would just continue to have those conversations and eventually bring them this way and we would rubber stamp it or what?
We don't rubber stamp anything.
Oh, no.
And, you know, there may be input from the other side of the room.
Okay. I only ask, that way we get y'all's work done.
Yeah, Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. We are kicking off internally our code amendments right now, where staff will start looking at these recommendations and others, those things directed by Council, and put together some recommendations for City Council to consider. It's a two-step process. We have to come to City Council. It's more than a two-step process. We have to come to City Council, though, for initial authorization. So you'll start to see some of those things probably in the summer. And then we go through the adoption process, which includes Planning Commission and City Council.
Cool, okay. And then I saw the mayor had asked a question that I was going to ask about, like the bike friendly businesses. But I know like Austin has some rebate programs and I think perhaps the rebate, one of the rebate programs as it relates to the e-bikes is because they actually own their energy. But I was wondering if that was any of the discussions as far as like actually getting people bikes? I just know so many people who would love to have a bike but just cannot afford it.
So that's definitely within the gamut of things you can do to incentivize work travel. So we were advised in the report card to reach out to regional organizations, Campo being an example. At that time, we would determine exactly what all we offer if we were to create a program at all.
Okay, cool. I'd only ask because I know when I was working for my boss in Houston, the city would come and do, I guess, bike giveaways. They would prob, you know, work with nonprofits, that way people could actually have access to wheels. But no, those were my only questions. So, thank you.
My question is on the businesses. Do we put that information out to them? I understand this is something that they need to do, correct, apply, and see if it's granted for them. But do we let them know that this is an option for them? I guess they get a sticker for their door and, you know, it puts them, it puts them on a map that maybe not everyone who's their competition is.
So to my knowledge, up to this point, we have not approached any businesses and told them that they could pursue this. Obviously, that would be a very early step in terms of getting more of those, you know, more of those things to celebrate within the city.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, let them know it's there and then, you know, they need, they do whatever they want to do to pursue that if they choose to. Okay. Any other?
I think Ms. Garza has a question online.
And, okay, I didn't know she had joined us. Been watching for her. Okay, Ms. Garza.
Been here since the public comments. But yeah, thank you for putting together this presentation. I guess I have some questions. Can you like elaborate on what methods were used to ensure that the survey respondents accurately reflected the socioeconomic and cultural makeup of San Marcos? I just didn't see any breakdown on the demographics of the respondents.
So we were aware of that. We, our goal was to get, you know, at least one response in Spanish. We did circulate the survey in English and Spanish. Unfortunately, we did not get a complete response. We got someone who started and didn't complete the survey. So yes, that is a way we could improve.
Oh, but like beyond the language part?
I'm sorry, would you say that again, Ms. Garza?
Yeah, man, like beyond the language barrier, like I'm wondering what other, like how was the survey distributed to try and capture a representative sample of San Marcos?
So I think, I think our, you know, one thing that's notable is that it was distributed through social media, so there was a digital distribution. And then there was also a distribution via print. So that means that if you are unable to check the internet for whatever reason, whether that's because you don't have the time, whether that's because of some sort of actual research or resource that is missing. Print is one way to reach people who, for some reason, are not able to get it digitally. I know that we put a handful of flyers around town that advertised the survey. Originally, we had planned them all sort of in the same part of town. And I actually consciously reached out to make sure that there were some north, south, east, and west. There was some effort, but I do appreciate that feedback. And maybe next time around, we could not only, not only seek out marginalized groups, but we could ask the league for feedback on the breakdown of our respondents.
Awesome, yeah. I really appreciate the ambition of the plan and like the collaboration with an outside entity who has like a really well-worded survey. I also wrote down that you talked about the wanting to increase the equity score, I guess. So the plan there to ensure future public input, like is more, I guess, representative of the community is to work like within the city staff that is like the equity person, right? Is that, like, what's the game plan there?
Yes, so some examples of how we've already incorporated equity. You heard me reference a meeting of multiple departments. So we actually, you know, made sure to invite Griselle Perez-Carry. And she was on that call. We have exchanged, you know, we've been in touch. She has sent me some materials from the Transportation Equity Cabinet that took place through Texas State last year. That was a beautiful effort by Dr. Rosalie Ray and her students. These are things that just have gotten us talking and we have plans to talk again.
Awesome, cool, yeah. Thank you for that insight. Just like while on the campaign trail and helping other folk when they work, when they're out, like talking to neighbors to get out the vote, bicycles and just like the, all of that is brought up a lot. And some folks, like you can tell, it's like maybe like a lack of access, like my colleague, Ms. Rodriguez said, like there's energy there to explore different means of transportation. I just think that we're not drawing those perspectives. Like I'm curious to hear what a hurricane worker or warehouse worker on the night shift crew might think about, you know, this survey, right? They have unique insights to what it's like arriving, who work drenched in sweat, but there's still energy there that like, you know, they want to be able to also give their input on how it could be made safer or even things when it comes to the new businesses that we bring into San Marcos, like asking them to provide like showers and stuff like that. I think it's some of the insight that I've seen other communities get from folks filling out surveys like this. Yeah, just something to consider. I think you did a great job. I appreciate all the information and the visuals and the background.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gonzalez.
Well, thank you. When you done the survey or the response that you got back, what percentage were they from age? Did you break it down by age group by any chance?
I would have to take a look into that. We received a spreadsheet of all 192 responses. And we could probably distill some of those answers into generalizations. As it is right now, it's a lot of raw data and we would have to take a look into it.
Yeah, I was just curious to see what part of our community is responding to the survey that was out there. Another one, you also mentioned that you done some other, well, there were some other cities that done the same thing compared to ours. Did they also have universities?
So we, you know, one option is just to go back to the slide. If it would be possible to go back to that bicycle friendly.
It's Fort Worth, San Antonio, Brownsville, Houston, Plano, Wichita Falls, Richardson, College Station, Frisco, and Dallas. So yes, some would.
Okay, yeah. But those are more than populations totally different than ours?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty close to the same population we had.
But they're all bronze also, they're at the same level.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Oh, that's all I had. Thank you. But I really like to know the age group that.
It would be good to know, you know, public school, college age, above.
Elderly, like me, elderly like me, yeah.
The over 50 crowd.
There you go.
Yes.
I think, I think there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of people in that group, though.
Okay.
Other questions, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, anybody over here? We're good.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much. We received a lot of information here, so, and I see there's a lot of opportunity left. Thank you, it was a good presentation.
I'm sorry, my only comment is I thought I had asked if there was demographic data similar to the age. I think a demographic breakdown would be helpful on everything, right? If we're talking about increasing the equity, like it would make sense to reflect on the demographic data of the respondents.
Okay, were you able to understand what she said? Because her audio is really not very good and I have no idea what she just said.
Yes, so we've, we've heard the request for a breakdown of respondents and we'll see how much the survey captured. And then from there, we'll get you the numbers that you're looking for.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and to give you some grace on that, I, the reason I asked about like access is because um it wasn't, oh, I was not aware at the cost of bikes until I did a mountain biking program at the high school. It's expensive, you know, and so I feel like if we really addressed access, we would probably have more people have opinions on what it means to bike in the, in the community, so. But thank you for your presentation. Genuinely, it was good.
Okay, moving on to item two. Ms. Trevino?
Receive a stat presentation on the results from the six-month pilot program which expanded the Spin Scooter Service Area to include a service area east of IH thirty-five and extended the Spin Scooter Service hours to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and receive council direction on integrating the east of IH thirty-five pilot program into Spin's permanent service area and further expanding the program to a new area east of IH thirty-five.
Ms. Reyes.
Mr. Charles Campbell will provide an update in regard to this.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. My name's Charles Campbell. I serve as the Multimodal Parking and Initiatives Manager for the city. Today, I'm here to provide an update on the Spin East of IH thirty-five Pilot Program, which was approved by City Council in May of twenty twenty-four. I'll also be requesting the integration of the Pilot Zone and Spin's Permanent Service Area and discussing the potential expansion of the program to include an additional service area east of thirty-five. A little background, on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, council approved the Spin E Scooter East of IH thirty-five Expansion Program. This expanded the Spin Service Area along Aqua Arena Springs and Yulin Drive east of Interstate thirty-five. It also extended the service hours to twenty-four seven and increased from the previous schedule of five AM to twelve AM. The objective of this pilot program was to increase ridership by three to five percent while maintaining the current safety incident record rate. On July first, twenty twenty-four, Spin implemented the East of IH thirty-five Expansion Program and today, we're gonna provide an update on this pilot program and a request expanding the program to an additional zone east of Interstate thirty-five. To give a little data results on the performance of the program, for the period of July of twenty twenty-four to February of twenty twenty-five, ridership summary, there were one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven rides that occurred in the new east of IH thirty-five service zone. There were four thousand five hundred and twenty-eight rides that occurred during the new service times from twelve AM to five AM. Rides in the east of IH thirty-five service zone accounted for four point one percent of all total rides and the late-night rides between twelve AM and five AM made up eight point six of total rides. And uh uh, the additional bullet point here, I'll discuss a little further on an additional slide. But combined, the rides for the east of uh IH thirty-five and during the late-night hours represented twelve point seven percent of all trips. As part of the implementation, uh, part of our concern was safety, especially for the extended hours from twelve AM to five AM. So, in conjunction with Spin, we implemented what was called the Safe Start feature, which is an in-app checkpoint. Self-start is designed to discourage people from riding under the influence. During the late-night hours, riders simply attempt to unlock the e-scooters or ask to verify that they can safely ride by correctly entering a keyword into the app. To give you some other additional data about the Spin program, we've broken down the annual ridership data so you could see. As you could see, between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, there was a slight decrease in ridership. Spin has reported that nationwide, they've seen an increase in personal micro mobility device ownership. While that's affected our program, I do still think that's a good problem to have as it's hopefully still continuing to take cars off the streets and reduce congestion. They also reported that fif- there are a fifty percent reduction in all rides category as joy rides. Don't really like that term, but that's the term that's been provided to me. All right, uh, just to report on the current safety incidences and review. Uh, Spin, as of today, has reported zero incidences during the pilot period. In addition, the San Marcos Police Department has reported zero incidences during the pilot period. Uh, the police department has also reviewed the new service zone plan and agrees with staff's recommendation to geofence the route under IH thirty-five to sidewalks only, and I'll show that here in just a moment. Uh, also, in addition, uh, we reached out to the San Marcos Fire Department. Uh, they also reported zero incidences during the pilot period. They also reviewed uh the new zone plan and agree with staff's recommendation concerning geofencing. We also reached out to Krista Senna Rosa Hospital and are awaiting information back from them concerning any kind of potential scooter incidences. All right, the recommended additional east of thirty-five zone, it's a new zone to include Blanco Gardens neighborhood and surrounding areas. But more importantly, it provides access to the Walmart, uh, which is a high-volume area for transit in general for the city. Uh, it also includes uh additional sp- uh Spin deployment zones at bus stops and I'll show those in a slide here in just a minute as well. This is a current map showing uh all the different Spin zones as we have them right now. The blue zone is the original Spin Deployment Zone and Service Area. The light green is the Pilot Zone that we're currently reviewing today off of Aqua Arena in Yulin and the dark green is the new service area that we're recommending. This is just a zoomed-in version of this current Pilot Zone off of Aqua Arena Springs and Yulin Drive. And this is a zoomed-in map of the new area we're recommending with the highlight of the Walmart area. Uh, as you can see, the connection that we're going from east to west is along eighty and Hopkins and uh that is where we are providing the east-to-west connection. In the future, uh, we will open up the Spin access to use the shared-use path that's projected to open uh sometime in twenty twenty-eight. Right here, you can get an idea of how the crossing would happen going from east to west across thirty-five along Hopkins. And these are a few examples of some of the deployment zones. Our idea is to continue to private, provide a connection between bus service and last mile multimodal service. And the idea is to provide scooters at each of these bus stops, so people will have that last-mile form of transportation as they continue to use bus services as well. All right, Spin Program benefits. It is a zero-cost program, so no city funds are required. There is also a small economic benefit as the city receives twenty cents per ride from Spin. Uh, it also increases the utilization of micro mobility. It alleviates traffic congestion by reducing the number of vehicles on the road. Provides additional transportation options for third-shift workers, students and other community members. Provides an equitable form of trust, transportation as it's a lower-cost alternative to owning a car. And it reduces the carbon footprint and vehicle emissions and provides multimodal transportation options in underserved areas. So, our recommendation is an approval to incorporate the East of Thirty-five Pilot Program into Spin's Permanent Service Zone. And we're also asking for expansion of the Spin E Scooter Program to the newly proposed zone east of IH thirty-five. So, uh, does council wish to pursue the following changes? And so I'll open it up for questions, comments, anything I can help clarify or answer for anyone.
Council, we'll go with any questions or comments on the, the presentation and the program first. Then I will end with, I'll be asking you these uh questions. Any thoughts?
So, I had a question about the Spin Access Program.
Yes.
Do, do we and/or Spin do anything to reach out to the community about the access program?
They have, and I continue to work with them on doing that more. Uh, I will say that we should do a better job uh reaching out to other members. And what I mean by that is Spin can only reach out to the current users or the past users that they've had in their system that they have contact information for. And so, uh, I'll work with public works on trying to get out additional information beyond those users to highlight that program.
Is there something we could do, maybe like either in bus or like on bus stops to kind of, for our, our bus users that aren't necessarily Spin users yet to kind of make them aware, kind of, kind of the um, I guess, the, the thought process of people that aren't aware with, of like Spin or aren't active users currently is almost that it's not necessarily a luxury, but they, they, a lot of people don't actually see it as a, another method of transportation. And, you know, are unfamiliar with the cost. They think it's, you know, uh, an excess cost, more of a, a want than a need. Um, so I, I think if we can help our, our neighbors realize that it is a viable transportation option and that there are programs out or this program out there that will help defer that cost uh for qualifying groups that, that be a good thing.
I think those are great comments. We'll absolutely try and coordinate with the Transit Department to see what kind of information we could put out at bus stops and promote the program further. Uh, we did do some videos and some social media pushes uh for the Pilot Program. They weren't for the access program necessarily, just for hitting the word out on the new Pilot Program. So, uh, I can work with those groups on providing some more communication on those programs, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, because I can see Spin being the last-last mile.
That is correct.
Uh, so do we, are there scooters at, and I'm sorry if, if this was in here, I didn't see it. Are there scooters at each bus stop?
Not at each bus stop. There were deployment zones that we put at the bus stops throughout the Pilot area and they are currently there. I am working on identifying downtown bus stop areas that have enough pad at the bus stop where we don't interfere with ADA access or anything like that. Uh, those will be coming online soon and we're gonna be requesting from Spin to deploy at those areas too. We can't do it at every bus stop just due to the nature of how it's laid out, but we have identified six or seven of them downtown that we will be deploying.
Yeah, uh, my question wasn't limited to downtown, but that was still good. So, are we planning for future bus sta- bus transit uh shelters to include some space for Spin?
There has been discussion between, uh, Streets has been helping us laying the pads and then the discussion has been twi- between me and Transit on identifying an additional space that can deploy scooters at. Yes, ma'am.
And I realize that's gonna be depending on how much space is available, but, but, but at least y'all are working on it.
That is correct, yes.
That's great, okay. Let's see, who else? Mrs. Rodriguez?
Um, yes, uh, thank you for the presentation and all the history, especially being newer. It's really appreciated.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, my questions are more so around like the pickup process. So, is it still, I guess the way I've seen it done is like you, you have a truck at the, you know, late hours of the night that comes, puts them in the back and drops them back off. Is that still the way it goes?
Yes.
Okay, and is there anything on the actual scooter itself that sort of lets people know, hey, don't leave this in a right of way?
No, but it does say that on the app.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, you, you have to have the app in order to, to start the unit.
Okay.
And so there is information about that on the application, yes.
Cool, thank you.
And yet still sometimes, yeah, I, I reported one in my neighborhood that it is laying in that sidewalk and it'd been there for three days and I'm going, yeah, something's not right here.
I moved to today out front of City Hall here in my coat and tie, so yes, it's.
Thank you.
Yeah, Spin is very good about addressing the problem when we ask them to. Uh, I continue to work with them on not allowing it to become a nuisance.
They have been phenomenally better than the, one of our previous folks. Any other questions over here? Looking to see if Ms. Garza's got her hand up over here. Good presentation. So now we have the questions. We've got the Pilot Program and so now we're being asked if we want to continue that uh pilot. And so I'll need a response from, from each of you.
I think the question was to make the Pilot part of their permanent service area.
Well, I said continue. I could say permanent, same thing.
Just.
Okay. As permanent as anything, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez?
Um, yes and yes, but I have a question. Uh, the second part expansion of the Spin E Scooter Program to include the additional zone, uh, is that, is that second part a Pilot or are we expanding both? So, we're essentially turning the existing Pilot permanent and then starting a new Pilot?
I think so. I think what we should monitor is those incidences, especially with the connection that's not the safest east-to-west across Hopkins. So, I think it would be prudent that we would run it as a Pilot again so we can ensure that uh it continues to be a safe route and we don't see anything that would cause us to have concerns about safety.
Cool, just wondering.
So, you said you're a yes on both?
Either way, yeah, I'm a yes on both.
Okay, yeah, I, I uh did make the assumption that it would be a Pilot because generally, anything is a Pilot when we try something, expansion of service on, on this one. Okay, Mr. Scott?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Yes, on both and Ms. Garza? I'm seeing, it looks like two thumbs up. Okay, we'll record her for two yeses. Uh, I'm two yeses. Mr. Sal Gonzalez?
I'm two, yes.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, I plan to be a yes. I just had a question on the, the first one as far as what we mean on like permanent service zone. Let's say, you know, God forbid, something ever happens with the partnership. Is there an ability for us to say, hey, we, we no longer want this or how, how permanent are we talking about?
Absolutely, you can roll that back.
Okay, okay, then uh yes, I'm, I'm both.
Okay, um, and I'm going to assume, but I'm looking for confirmation, that the university has been helpful whenever we're trying to reach students and I hope the university star has been helpful when needed, et cetera, because, okay.
Very helpful. We have a monthly meeting with Spin and the university is involved in that meeting as well.
That's great, well, they're co-hosts, whatever it is with us, so.
They're in a local agreement.
Okay, so, uh, this is great and uh if there are no other questions or changes, thank you so much, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Campbell, good presentation and, um, Ms. Trevino, we will move on to item three.
Receive an update regarding implementation of the Edwards Aquifer Habitat Conservation Plan and the permanent renewal process.
Ms. Reyes?
Mayor and Council, the next presentation is an update on the Edwards Aquifer Habitat Conservation Plan. The EA HCP defines how the region protects federally listed endangered species that live in the Edwards Aquifer and the Comal and San Marcos Spring, uh, spring systems. Implementation of the EA HCP commenced in twenty thirteen after almost a decade of planning with regional stakeholders and state and federal agencies to balance Edwards Aquifer usage and river recreation with the needs of the endangered species. The Habitat Conservation Plan is the foundation of an incidental take permit issued by Fish, US Fish and Wildlife serviced under the Federal Endangered Species Act. Permites include the San Antonio Area Water System, Edwards Aquifer Authority, City of San Marcos, Texas, State University and City of New Braunfels. The city, the part, city's permit, the current permit term is twenty thirteen to twenty, twenty-eight and the program is working to renew the permit for a thirty-year term, which would be from twenty twenty-eight to twenty fifty-eight. The EA HCP includes both habitat and spring flow protection measures intended to ensure adequate spring flow and benefit the endangered species and aquatic ecosystem as a whole. Since twenty thirteen, the EA HCP has invested over ten million dollars in habitat restoration and ecosystem improvements within the San Marcos River and approximately a hundred fifty-two million dollars in spring flow protection. I'll now turn it over to Habitat Conservation Plan Manager Mark Enders to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes, for the introduction. Um, and good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Um, it's my pleasure and I really appreciate the opportunity to present on this program that I've been involved with really the last ten years. Um, last eight or so years with the City of New Braunfels and now with the, with the City of San Marcos, so. With that, I'll dive right in. Um, I would like to clearly state, you know, why I wanna give this presentation. It's really to just, one, to provide an overview about the Habitat Conservation Plan and I'm gonna all constantly use the acronym HCP um for Edwards Aquifer Habitat Conservation Plan. It's a mouthful. Um, but really, the purpose and the benefit of these program, this program to the community, I'm gonna kind of reemphasize this through my presentation, but really, I wanted to just emphasize that, one, this plan, it provides legal protection to the city and other permites for activities that may impact endangered species that are found in the Comal and San Marcos River system. Those, those impacts are largely due to river recreation and aquifer pumping, as well as a couple, a couple other activities that I'll talk about. The HCP, it clearly outlines activities that the city and other permites need to implement uh to stay in compliance with the incidental take permit and the endangered. uh to stay in compliance with the incidental take permit in the Endangered Species Act. As Ms. Reyes mentioned, the program has um supported over $10,000, or I'm sorry, $10 million in river restoration projects since 2013. And I'll talk a lot about what those projects are. And really, without the city's participation in this program and and a permittee under this incidental take permit from US Fish and Wildlife, the city would be liable for lawsuits under the Endangered Species Act, which is really what happened back in the 90s when the um the Sierra Club filed a lawsuit against the Department of Interior for failure to um have adequate protections on the Edwards Aquifer to protect the endangered species of both Comal, San Marcos Springs. Um, and then I'll talk a little bit about this permit renewal process, which is currently underway. Um, the, I'm sorry, the current term of the HCP and the incidental take permit is 2013 through 2028, so that permit expires in 2028. We're looking to renew this permit for a 30-year term, so 2028 through 2058. And I'll talk a little bit more about this process and what it entails. I just said overview, um, a high, high level overview of the HCP. It's, as essence, a plan to protect endangered species in both San Marcos and Comal River systems. I'll emphasize most of the San Marcos River system measures. But nonetheless, it protects spring flow at both systems and it aims to protect endangered species in both river systems. The HCP is a key component, component of an incidental take permit that's issued to the permittees by US Fish and Wildlife Service. And as I mentioned earlier, it protects those permittees against take tar harm or harassment to the endangered species caused by otherwise lawful activities like river recreation or aquifer usage. Uh, the plan includes both spring flow protection and habitat protection measures, as well as extensive biological monitoring and also a refugia program. All the measures that I'll talk about today are funded through the HCP program. The funding comes through um permit fees that the Edwards Aquifer Authority imposes on Edwards Aquifer users. You know, the city being one, Texas State being another, and I'll talk a little bit more about those permittees. The HCP began in 2013. Um, you know, looking back at the time then, there was a lot of um a lot of particip- participation in trying to develop a plan that balanced the needs of um, you know, water resources for the central Texas area of river recreation. Um, and essentially the state legislature, um, you know, required the E-RIP process, the precursor to the HCP, Edwards Aquifer Recovery Implementation Plan, and basically required stakeholders to come together to um put this plan together to prevent federal intervention or oversight of the Edwards Aquifer. I've mentioned this a little bit, but it truly is a regional plan. Um, you know, the the permittees on this incidental take permit and the the folks that are implementing this HCP are Edwards Aquifer Authority, you know, they issue all the permits for usage and withdrawal from the Edwards Aquifer. The San Antonio Water System, they are by far their largest user of the Edwards Aquifer. Um, City of New Braunfels, also a user of the Edwards Aquifer, also, you know, owns most of the property or a good amount of the property around the Comal Spring System and Comal River. Texas State University, an aquifer user, but also, you know, owns property around Spring Lake in the upper part of the river. And then, of course, City of San Marcos, um, a user of the Edwards Aquifer and, you know, property, adjacent property owner. There's also a lot of other stakeholders that are involved in this in this um plan. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but you know, some of the stakeholders are, you know, every single permittee that has Edwards Aquifer um permits to the Edwards Aquifer Authority, they are essentially paying into this program. Uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, GBRA, New Braunfels Utilities, um, and then a couple, Texas Living Waters Project, San Marcos River Foundation, and of course, US Fish and Wildlife Service. So together, all these permittees and stakeholders are responsible for in um implementing this plan. I'll talk first about the spring flow protection measures as part of the plan. These are really the, these are really emphasized as part of this plan. There, these protection measures are all about protecting spring flow at Comal and San Marcos Springs to meet the the needs of the endangered species in those systems. Um, just for reference, um, you know, the state legislature and the Edwards Aquifer Authority has capped the amount that can be withdrawn from the Edwards Aquifer. And that's 572,000 acre feet that can be pulled out of the aquifer any given year. The HCP establishes minimum spring flow objectives for both Comal and San Marcos Springs. So it's 30 CFS for Comal, 45 CFS for San Marcos Springs. And this is um determined on what this, you know, the amount of flow that the species need for their survival. Uh, and so to meet those minimum flows during times of drought, um, namely the drought of the record, which was the drought of the 1950s, um, basically, the program had modeled different spring flow protection measures that would be needed to meet these minimums pro, minimum flows at San Marcos and Comal Springs. One of those measures is the EAA Stage Five Reduction, which requires all permitted aquifer users to reduce their usage by up to 44% um, which is a huge ask across the region, um, as far as cutting back, you know, withdrawals from the aquifer when spring flow gets low and Edwards Aquifer levels decline to the tune of, you know, upwards of 250,000 acre feet. So when you look at that volume compared to what's actually permitted from the aquifer, you know, 44% is a huge volume of water that's taken off the table, all to support the Comal and San Marcos Springs. We also have a, what's called a voluntary irrigation suspension program. This is where the program is essentially paying per farmers or irrigated users of the aquifer who have permitted water rights through the Edwards Aquifer. It pays them to not use their water um during drought years so that that water's left in the aquifer and provides a benefit to spring flow. Uh, this program has been triggered for the last several years as we are really in a serious drought period right now and have been for the last several several years. So this program offers another benefit to keep that water in the aquifer. Um, another measure is the SAWS, San Antonio Water Systems Aquifer Storage and Recovery System. This program has not been initiated just yet, but it's in place um to provide a benefit to spring flow during sustained long-term droughts. So we may see this measure implemented in the next couple of years if this drought continues. And that's all about the San Antonio Water Systems. They've already stored 126,000 acre feet of water in the Creaseville Cox Aquifer that can be pulled back and used during times of drought to offset their Edwards Aquifer usage. Um, and again, all these spring flow protection measures together um have been modeled through a sophisticated model to basically achieve those minimum flows at San Marcos and Comal Springs. Going back, I'm sorry to have to backtrack, but um I failed to mention our beloved endangered species. I think most folks may be aware, but you know, there's a couple salamanders um in the San Marcos River system. We have a endangered minnow, the fountain darter. Uh, we have a couple aquatic beetles that are at the springs and the Texas wild rice. So I just wanted to make sure I didn't skip over that. So just a little bit more about the staged reductions. The HCP included that Stage Five Reduction of 44%. But a lot of folks hear about the um different stages that Edwards Aquifer Authority imposes on permitted water users, users, stage one through five, and those vary a little different from our stage water reductions. But just, just again, for reference, 572,000 acre feet can be withdrawn on any given year from the aquifer minus these required reductions that are imposed on approximately 1,800 individual permits um holders across the Edwards Aquifer region. Um, again, for reference, out of that 572,000 acre feet, San Antonio Water Systems has almost half the permitted water rights from Edwards Aquifer. And we have New Braunfels Utilities behind, and then these aren't necessarily um in sequential order, but these are the permittees that um have water rights. So the City of San Marcos has uh 5,433 acre feet per year. Texas State, 2,000 acre feet per year. And the rest of the volume is made up by, you know, the other, you know, almost 1,800 permittees across the whole Edwards Aquifer region. So it's really incumbent upon all those Edwards Aquifer users to abide by these stage restrictions to reduce their aquifer usage, again, all to provide the the spring flow benefit at the springs. And just a, just a point that I wanted to to make here is that that 5,433 acre feet per year, that is 28% of the City of San Marcos' total water supply. So on any given year, when these drought restrictions are in place, we could see up to 44% reduction. So only approximately 3,000 of that may be allowed for withdrawal. You know, if we do see these um progressive stage reductions.
And do we use that much?
No, my understanding is that we
I thought we're like 7% or something.
Yeah, I think our actual usage, and I don't wanna speak, but I know it's well below the 5,433. In the last several years, 30 to 40% cutbacks have been required. So we're only allowed, let's say, ballpark, 4,000 acre feet that could be used. And of that, I think we're only use 2 to 3,000 acre feet per year.
Using a lot less. Ms. Rodriguez?
Oh, uh, it was actually on the last slide.
Sure.
Um, as it relates to the irrigation suspension program, I know we do something like this for energy. Um, but how do those payments work? Like, is it only when a drought is triggered and it can it only be for a specific time?
Sure.
Like, basically, I guess my question is, can somebody profit off of that?
Yeah, a- absolutely. And it's um, it's all negotiated through Edwards Aquifer Authority. Um, and they basically enter agreements with farmers who have permitted water rights. And so the farmers, it's voluntary. They can enroll in the program. Um, the program and EAA pay them a standby fee. So when the aquifer levels are, you know, high and um spring flow is good, um, they're basically getting a standby fee and they can still use their permitted water rights. And when we hit a certain um trigger, when the aquifer levels at a certain low point um on the year prior, on October, um, basically, they're committed for that next year if the program triggers to not, they can't use their permitted water rights and they're paid even more.
Wow.
So farmers who either, see, they're writing on the wall, it's been really hard drought time, so they'd be having trouble growing a crop, maybe. Or, um, you know, they just wanna take a payment and then maybe they can grow like a dryland crop that doesn't require irrigation. So they can still farm their property. They just can't use their water rights that they have enrolled in the program. So certainly, there's, this is a popular program, so folks are definitely, farmers are definitely fine with taking a paycheck to not, you know, essentially do any work and just forego their their water usage.
And is it a fee paid per day or just for the?
It's for a year, yeah. Yeah. And I don't have those in front of me, but um, yeah, I don't wanna misspeak. But yeah, there's a standby payment, which is a lesser amount. And then if it actually triggers, there's a a larger payment that goes out. And it's based on per acre feet, per acre foot of water that's being uh for- foreborne.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, now turn into the habitat protection measures. These are what, you know, I'm more involved with on a day-to-day basis on implementing, you know, essentially river restoration projects in the San Marcos River system. And I do that both on behalf of the city, but also Texas State University. Um, these have been implemented since 2013. So a lot of folks have seen these occurring on the river since then. Um, and these include aquatic vegetation restoration, Texas Wild Rice restoration, stream bank restoration, water quality protection, non-native species management, management of litter, and management of river recreation. And I'll talk a little bit about each of these or a few of these. You know, aquatic vegetation restoration, um, you know, the HCP includes specific goals to how much Texas wild rice and other aquatic vegetation we need to have in the river system to support the endangered species. You know, either the Texas wild rice itself or the fountain darter, that minnow that uses these vegetation types up here. So the Texas wild rice is not the greatest fountain darter habitat, but these other vegetation types that are in the river provide, you know, habitat for that minnow, that fountain darter that we're trying to protect. So we're basically out in the river. Um, Texas State Meadow Center is the one who implements and and um does this work for us. But they're out there essentially like doing gardening in the river. So they're take, you know, removing non-native species or, you know, weeds, if you will, removing those non-desirable species from the river and planning and trying to expand the coverage of these other aquatic vegetation types of the river. And that's all to mitigate for, you know, low-flow periods when we have die-off of vegetation during low flow, but also helps to mitigate recreational impacts. Certainly, you know, extensive river recreation does have negative impacts on the habitat that we're trying to protect. Riparian restoration, you know, this is similar work, but on the immediate banks of the river. So this includes, you know, removal of non-native invasive vegetation, whether that's elephant ears or Chinese talah, China berry, lugustrum. It's removal of those non-natives and establishment of native vegetation. And that generally occurs all the way from Spring Lake to Stokes Park. I have a picture here that shows Rio Vista, the Walk Bridge to Cypress Island. Um, the photo on the left, I think that's, y'all's left as well, was 2013 before the HCP began. And then the photo on the right is taken, um, it was last year I took this photo. But it shows kind of the conversion of, you know, an area like a riparian zone that's really degraded from just heavy visitor usage and, you know, a lot of erosion happening um to one that has like a, you know, dense riparian zone that's helps to stabilize the stream banks and helps to protect water quality. We're also out in the river. Um, we have a local contractor who does this on our behalf, but they're removing non-native um fish species from the the river, namely placostomus, the algae eater that, you know, people usually see sucking algae off the inside of their fish tank. Um, at some point in time, these, both of these species, the placostomus and tilapia, were released into the river system and they have done quite well in the river system. And they do cause negative impacts to those endangered species we're trying to protect. So we have a an aggressive program to remove these species from the river to reduce their impacts on the the endangered species. Yes, ma'am.
Where do they go? Like, what do y'all, what do they do with them?
Um, the tilapia, basically, our contractor has a fish fry at IVAR's River Pub every year. So he collects, takes, takes these out, cleans them, and then has a community fish fry. And you can go get a fish taco free of charge. The placostomus, um, you know, tilapia is great, makes a great fish taco. Uh, placostomus, you know, I I wouldn't be eating that thing. So those are
You can't throw, you have to throw them back.
Yeah, I'm not sure the fate of those. They're probably disposed of, you know, solid waste.
Yeah, and I think it's state law, you can't throw them back in once you catch them.
That's correct, yeah. If you if you capture these, you do have to take them out of the river and and make sure they're not gonna be reintroduced.
And there's no place that wants them, I assume?
No. Yeah, and generally, the removal methods of pole spearing or bowfishing, it's it's a lethal fishing met, or, yeah, a lethal method. So they're
But there's still disposal of, yeah.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Um, another program that we have that is a good program associated with this is at the City of San Marcos Discovery Center, we have what's called a pet fish adoption um and drop-off program. So if you are, if you're moving out of your house, you have a fish tank with a bunch of goldfish or these placostomus and you don't know what to do with it, you know, unfortunately, people in the past have thought, well, I don't wanna flush it down toward it. I don't wanna kill it. I wanna have a heart.
Dump them in the river.
So, yeah, I encourage folks to not ever dump their aquariums in the river cuz it can release other non-natives that we wanna, um, don't wanna have to deal with. So this offers a program where folks can go and drop their fish off uh and feel good about it, where they're not having to kill their their aquarium fish. They can drop them off, folks can come in and adopt them. And it's actually quite a popular program. There's a lot of fish moving through that Discovery Center. So if you're setting up a fish tank, if you don't wanna buy fish, you can go to the Discovery Center and pick up some fish for free.
That's interesting. Okay. Sort of an animal shelter for fish?
Exactly. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Um, litter collection, so the HCP includes regular underwater litter collection. So this is not necessarily from the banks, but picking up litter from the bed of the river. And so we have a local contractor that um twice a week during the busy season, they're, you know, in with snorkels and scuba gear, cleaning litter off the bed of the river and then less so often during um the off-season. And so this is just coupled with all the other city and volunteer efforts to clean up litter um in and adjacent to the parks and the river. So just some stats over the last, you know, 2022 to 2024, um, 1,350 cubic feet have been removed through this effort.
How, how is that managed? Is that out of your office or is that university?
Yeah, every, yeah, everything that I'm talking about here, these habitat protection measures is is managed by me.
Okay, thank you.
We have contracts with, um, you know, some of it is done through the Meadow Center. We have an interlocal agreement with them. Or like this contractor, it's a local, you know, environmental contractor that that does this work. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, management of recreation, you know, this is probably one of the more challenging, um, you know, measures to implement, but one that is 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 necessary to protect endangered species in the river. Um, and this is done through several different ways. You know, one is just pure educational signage. So up and down the river, you've likely seen signage along the riverbanks that talk about the HCP um and things you maybe should or shouldn't be doing to help conserve endangered species habitat. So there's the educational type signage. And then there's also like the picture in the middle, there is, you know, more regulatory signage that says, do not enter this area endangered species habitat. Um, we also have um the HCP Conservation Crew. So this, you've probably seen these folks, photos on the right, they're always wearing the same Conservation Crew shirts. These are eight to 10 part-time staff that are staffed during the summer months through the the City of San Marcos Discovery Center. And they're basically trained to patrol up and down the river, either on foot or in kayak, to educate river users on how to be good stewards of the river. So if they encounter somebody that's pulling out Texas wild rice or littering, they will very politely ask them, you know, or educate them on the negative impacts of what they're doing. They'll, they'll hand out trash bags, um, they'll help clean up litter themselves. So they're really just, you know, I'd say we have the park ambassadors and park rangers. They're just more of a step down from, say, the park ambassadors where they're just, you know, politely approaching river users and just trying to educate them and trying to teach them to be good river stewards.
How much of this information is on our tourism pages? Visit samarcus.com. So people know before they come that Visit samarcus.com, so people know before they come that there's going to be some, uh, requirements and some requests.
And I don't think there is any information on that, but a good note, and I'll see if we can get some information.
Might, might be helpful, and then I'm, I'm guessing it's on our parks pages when we, when people come, before they come, when they're looking about the river.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and again, that's, you know, managed through the, our Parks Department and, um, you know, eight to ten part-time staff. And again, that's all managed through the city, but we get funding through the program, as with all these other measures funded through the HCP program. Uh, we also have the, say, the buoys or the ex, what I call the, you know, Texas wild rice exlosures in the river. So, these are buoys and signage actually in the river. We had to get a, a designation through the Texas Wildlife Commission and Texas Parks and Wildlife to be able to install structures like this in the state waterway. Um, so, that, that is in place, and then we basically put buoys and signage within the river to kind of keep people out of, um, sensitive areas that we're trying to protect. Um, and last, but certainly not least, is the stabilized river access points and the riparian buffers and fencing, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. This has been a very successful measure as part of the program. Um, you know, essentially, I think it was two thousand thirteen or fourteen, the HCP paid to install these chop block river access points. And I think there's seven or eight of these up and down the river from, uh, just above Sewell Park down to Ramon Lucio. And so, these provide a stabilized place for folks to access the river. In, directly in front of these access points, you know, we're not trying to maintain stands of Texas wild rice or other aquatic vegetation. We know that these areas are going to get hammered by just a lot of river traffic, and that's fine. And the, and the point of this is, we can focus river recreation to areas that are somewhat seen as sacrificial, and we can try to preserve areas of the river in between these access points. And what we've done in between those access points to control access to the river is, is there is that riparian fencing, which serves, you know, a twofold, um, purpose. One is to help protect the riparian vegetation, to keep that from getting trampled, but two is to prevent just willy-nilly access to areas in between these access points, because it's not just the riparian vegetation, but as folks enter the river in different areas, um, they will be trampling other aquatic vegetation that we're trying to protect. And you can really see this if you look at aerial imagery of, say, City Park, you'll see no aquatic vegetation. You go downstream of there and you will see really dense lush aquatic vegetation in the river. And here's just, um, you know, for folks who have been around long enough, um, you know, if you remember Dog Beach Pyramid Park, um, City Park, whatever you want to call it, there, um, photo on the left was pre-HCP, you know, we had that eyesore of an eroding slope right there, and then we came in and put in the, uh, the stabilized access point that, you know, helped to curb erosion and just help, you know, to facilitate access to the river in that area. Uh, the HCP has also supported water quality protection measures, so this is generally in the way of, um, application or implementation of green stormwater infrastructure, um, really measures that help to clean up or collect and treat stormwater runoff before it enters the river. So, a couple of examples are the, what I call the downtown bioretention basin, this is right near Plaza Park off CM Allen, collects a lot of the stormwater runoff from downtown area and basically filters it out before it discharges into the river. There's another one of those adjacent to the City Park parking lot that collects a lot of runoff from, um, you know, that large student parking area next to the, uh, the stadium. Another water quality protection measure is, you know, the Sesame Creek Stream Restoration Project. So, phase one of that project was completed a couple of years ago. The HCP funded the stream restoration elements, like what you see in the photo on the right, and then the city also did some sewer rehab work where we removed, um, suspended wastewater lines that were basically suspended o, over the creek and really susceptible to, um, you know, damage. So, there, it's a twofold, you know, partnership of a project with the Sesame Creek Restoration Project. Phase two, um, we, y'all have approved a contract for phase two of the project, looking to start, um, I'm going to say May timeframe, that's not very sure, all right, say May. Uh, but that'll be phase two, kind of the upper reaches of the Sesame Creek and the Windmill Tributeary. But that's all the conservation measures that, you know, we implement, you know, within the river. Um, the HCP also includes, um, extensive water quality and biological monitoring. So, um, the EAA contracts with the consultant, basically, they come to the river at least twice a year and they map the aquatic vegetation in the river. So, there's really close tabs on, you know, the extent and the coverage of wild rice and the other aquatic vegetation that we're trying to protect. You know, there's a lot of species surveys with respect to fountain darters and salamanders and riffle beetles, and then water quality monitoring that also occurs. So, there's really tight tabs kept on the system, making sure that the species are still healthy and resilient, and all this gets reported, you know, back to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. There's also, at the San Marcos Aquatic Research Facility and at the Uvalde National Fish Hatchery, there's a program to, um, keep live populations of these endangered species in captivity. So, there's what they call a sal, a, a restocking program where they come out, they collect species from the wild, they hold those in tanks at these facilities, um, they do research on them while they're there, and then they have a standing population in the case that, you know, the springs did go dry or there was a chemical spill or other, um, incident that caused mortality of the endangered species, they have a population to re, um, release back into the wild. You know, just a little bit about program administration is that the HCP is governed by an implementing committee, so they make all the decisions on budgets and work plans, uh, and really the implementation of the plan, and that's a representative from each, um, permittee, and I serve on that and represent the City of San Marcos. Um, there's also a stakeholder committee, it's a, it's a membership of, uh, close to thirty participants who also review a lot of the ongoings of the plan and, um, provide input on the plan. And then last but not least, the science committee that, um, looks at all the scientific merits of either monitoring plan or the implementation, these work plans and the activities that are going on in the river system. So, as I mentioned, the funding for this program all comes through aquifer management fees imposed, um, on Edward's Aquifer permit holders issued by, um, you know, Edwards Aquifer Authority. That AMF or aquifer management fee is variable from year to year. Right now, it sits at ninety dollars an acre foot. So, City of San Marcos, we pay, you know, ninety times five thousand four hundred and thirty-three, um, the math is close to, yeah, five hundred thousand dollars, a little less is what we pay annually into the program. Other permittees, like San Antonio Water Systems, you know, two hundred and thirty-five thousand acre feet of water times the ninety. So, they're paying the lion's share of these costs that are going into implementing this program. You know, program cost, roughly all these programs combined that I talked about, you know, approximately twenty million dollars a year, um, total from, over the course of this HCP and this permit term, um, two hundred and thirty million dollars, so huge regional investment into this plan. City of San Marcos, we've expended close to ten million dollars on these restoration measures since two thousand thirteen, and by the end of the permit term, we will probably have, uh, expended twelve million dollars on habitat protection in the San Marcos River system.
And that's HCP dollars?
All HCP dollars, yeah.
Okay.
You know, of course, we pay in, we pay into that, but then all the other Edwards Aquifer permittees pay in as well. So, a lot, a lot comes back into doing, you know, this restoration work, um, in town and to keep the springs flowing. Every year, I put together a work plan that dictates the work and the rec, restoration activities that we'll implement for the next year, um, that gets signed off on by the science committee and the implementing committee, and, um, we do annual reporting to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that, all the monitoring data, all the, um, work efforts are all summarized and submitted to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, um, service. And just last week, the implementing approved, implementing committee approved, it's the middle of the two thousand twenty-four work plan, or, I'm sorry, annual report to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We're also working again on the incidental take permit and HCP renewal process that I'll talk a little bit about. So, as I mentioned, the existing incidental take permit expires in two thousand twenty-eight. So, over the last, really, it's been the last year and a half, work groups have been convened to basically look at the existing HCP, uh, and discuss how that HCP should look over the next, um, thirty years. So, EAA, Edwards Aquifer Authority has been taking the lead on this, and they have a consultant hired that's kind of helping to facilitate this pro, process, but really, all the stakeholders and permittees are providing guidance into what they felt, feel it needs to be included in the next HCP, both in terms of feasibility and what's needed to protect the species. So, we're planning to submit a draft HCP to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, um, in two thousand twenty-six, um, and then looking, um, to late two thousand twenty-seven to have a final HCP, um, approved. And again, considering a thirty-year permit term. So, everything I talk about in the next couple of slides, keeping your head, two thousand twenty-eight to two thousand fifty-eight, so thirty-year term. You know, the activities that we're seeking coverage for are generally the same, you know, river recreation, we want coverage so that we're not, um, you know, so that we don't have legal challenges against facilitating recreation and the damage that it can cause to endangered species habitat, you know, again, permitted use of the Edwards Aquifer, um, and then implementation of the actual restoration activities can temporarily have impacts to the species. But the new one that we're looking to add is construction projects within and adjacent to the river. So, this would help to streamline the process, say, if, um, you know, engineering and CIP wanted to come in or parks wanted to come in and do either maintenance or, you know, put a new s, uh, stormwater outfall or any other structure adjacent to the river or along the banks, this would help with, it would negate the need to get a separate permit from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so that we'd already have coverage for some of those construction activities, which essentially would save time and money. Uh, the proposed new HCP has similar goals and objectives, bio love for the, for the species, and those are similar spring flow objectives, um, objectives as far as species abundance, aquatic vegetation and Texas wild rice coverage, and also water quality goals. You know, the proposed spring flow objectives for the San Marcos and Comal Springs are very similar to in the past, um, but a little different in that, you know, we still have a minimum of forty-five CFS that we're looking to achieve at San Marcos System, um, but trying to have that up around sixty CFS for most of the year. And then also having some three-year rolling average and long-term goals for flow in the San Marcos River. So, one hundred and thirty-six for three, for three-year rolling average and one hundred and forty CFS, um, as a long-term average. And just for reference, right now, the river's flowing about eighty-five to ninety CFS, which it has been over the last couple of years or even lower. So, we are really in the thick of a, of a serious drought that's affected spring flow. The last thing to mention on these is, these were put together, um, to ensure that with the effects of climate change over the next thirty years, there was an extensive climate change analysis done that, you know, potentially a hotter, warmer, um, drier climate could lead to less recharge in the aquifer. So, with these new spring flow objectives in mind, um, you know, there's, we need to make sure that the spring flow protection package is adequate to meet these flow objectives. You know, some other biological goals and objectives, very similar to the ones we have in place now, are, um, you know, certain coverages that we need to, to, to have in the river of Texas wild rice and aquatic vegetation. And then these proposed conservation measures for making sure that we achieve those minimum spring flows, and these are very similar to the ones we have now that involve, um, you know, the stage five reductions from the EAA on permittees, and then the uses of San Antonio Water Systems Aquifer Storage and Recovery Unit, as well as the VISPO, you know, paying the farmers, um, or other forbearance agreements. So, this, this could be in the form of paying any permitted user to just not use their water during, during times of drought. The conservation measures that are being proposed in the new HCP are very similar to what's in the existing HCP. So, it, just to consider that we're proposing to continue implementation of what you've seen and what I presented on over the next thirty-year term, um, with some minor tweaks to each of these, um, especially during low-flow times when the, the species are stressed and the system is stressed, there may be some additional measures being implemented when, say, river flows get down below sixty CFS or forty-five CFS, which is not that often. Next steps, um, you know, we are reviewing section by section of this new draft HCP, um, and we're expecting to, um, uh, give a thumbs up on this conservation strategy in May of this year. I'm giving a thumbs up on the monitoring and adaptive management section, um, in August of two thousand twenty-five, and then of October this year, looking at all the preliminary costs that will take to fund, um, this next iteration of the HCP. So, the next council action that will likely be required will be middle of next year, um, when we're looking to have city council basically review and sign off, um, and support a council resolution to submit this draft HCP to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for their initial review. Just one note, too, is that in next council meeting on April fifteenth, I will have an A, an HCP-related item that is basically just a, um, the, the consideration of an inter-local agreement with Texas State University, it's a, an amendment to an existing inter-local agreement, basically just to support continued, um, work that the Meadow Center is doing to implement and enact some of this, um, mainly the aquatic vegetation restoration that's done as part of the HCP. So, that ILA involves a little bit of an increase, um, in the services, in the cost of the services that are provided by the Meadow Center. And again, that increase will be supported through the HCP program. Great, thanks for bearing with me. Be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I have one, it has to do with the, uh, question that I put out on the message board, and I wasn't suggesting that the fences all come down, but we've had extensive conversation about the fences before, and part of it was just the temporary look of some of the, kind of looked like temporary construction fencing that wasn't, uh, beautiful. But the other thing is, when I remember way back, um, that the original plan was to use vegetation to encourage people not to go into the river at certain places and to go in the access points that, that were set up for that.
Sure.
Um, and then when we talked about this before, it was, well, the vegetation hadn't had time to grow yet, will there be some point in the next thirty years where the fences may not have to be there? Although I understand we may want the fences up for a different purpose.
Sure, yeah, and I don't know, you know, going back to, say, two thousand thirteen, I think a lot of those, those fences were installed, you know, two thousand thirteen, fifteen timeframe, and I do believe that initially they were intended to be temporary until vegetation established. And I think it was thought that, especially with, um, increased river usage, right, more and more people coming to enjoy the river, that even without those fences, over time, people would start to mow paths through the vegetation, and over time, those areas would get retrampled, you know, it may not happen immediately, but over time, so.
That, that was my assumption, so probably the fences are just going to have to remain there to, to ensure that people don't access the river in certain places, which would be unsafe places for them to access the river anyway.
Yes, ma'am, and that would be, you know, looking at it purely from, you know, a protection of endangered species habitat, that would be my recreation, or my recommendation. Um, and then also with the investments that the program has paid into, you know, constructing those stabilized access points, um, it kind of, um, helps to support the need for those fences and that we have constructed these, these nice, these access points, um, and then kind of keeping other areas off limits.
And you're saying HCP paid for all of that fencing?
Uh, I meant the access points, yeah, the, the big ticket, and those were not cheap. I don't have the dollar figures, but those access points for.
I think, I think we paid for some of it, too.
Perhaps, yeah, I know, we, we have, we have paid for some of the maintenance to those access points.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Other questions?
Hmm, as it relates to the fencing, um, how do we, like, make sure, you know, wildlife can still access the river if it needs to?
Sure, good question. Um, my predecessor had some forest site and, um, there's a six-inch gap.
Yeah, we've asked that.
Almost on all those fences, so that critters can scurry.
Turtle clearance.
That's what I was really asking for.
Turtles, raccoons, um, possums, they, they should be able to scurry. Nutria, yeah, the good and the bad.
Okay.
Should be able to get access to the river, yeah.
Cool, yeah, good question. Anyone else, Mr. Gonzalez over on this side?
Thank you.
Okay. Good presentation, you covered it well, so thank you.
Thanks much.
Okay, so, I believe, Mr. Vino, that concludes items one, two, and three.
Yes, ma'am.
We are to question and answer with the press and public. Did we have anybody signed up? Okay, in that case, and guess what, y'all? There's no executive session today. So, we will actually, being no further business for us to handle on this, uh, agenda, we will adjourn at four twenty-nine. See you back at five fifty-five.